Everybody good? Everybody ready, Kelly?
Good.
Okay, just another thirty seconds.
Everybody got really quiet about two minutes before.
It's an eager group this morning, yes.
Yes.
Good. On or you're not sure?
I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, good morning, everyone. And I welcome each of you to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting this morning. It's nine AM Tuesday, May the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are in the community wing of City Hall. And with that, I'd ask you to please stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. And following the pledge, you're welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. If I could ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
President.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
Okay, for the, for the public, Councilwoman Pontieri is going to participate fully in today's meeting remotely, so we'll make sure that the councilwoman has a chance to speak at each, each part of the agenda. So with that, we'll move right to proclamations, which are first on our agenda this morning. I'll do the first of two and then followed by a presentation. So if I could ask all of our public work personnel to please come up and join me. Wow, that's impressive. Yes, so we'll do that, good. Have you got enough room, everybody? I appreciate your coming up here, so it gives a chance to everybody to see you. So to start off the proclamation this morning, city staff has prepared a video, so let's let that be the introduction this morning. So if you would go ahead, please. I think you all can see it on the various monitors.
The City of Palm Coast is proud to celebrate National Public Works Week.
Throughout the year, our Public Works team, along with stormwater and engineering and utility teams, strive to advance the quality of life throughout our city in a myriad of ways.
From routine maintenance to problem solving or enhancing processes to save on the time and cost, the teamwork and synergy in these teams is indicative of their commitment to excellence.
Their efforts, which enhance the safety and well-being of our residents and the beautification of our city, is a huge part of what makes Palm Coast the best place to live, work, learn, and play.
We salute the pride that every member of these teams show in the work that they do this week and every week throughout the year, here in our city on the rise.
So I don't know if I'm taking a liberty in speaking in front of Mr. Mansell, who is the director of this department, but, you know, that video, to me, points out that this is the group behind me, which looks so big and, and important this morning, but, you know, during the rest of the week, you become somewhat invisible. And I, for one, would like to change that. I would like all of our public, all of our residents, all of our community, to better understand what each of you are doing so very hard each and every day. So this proclamation will be the beginning of that, followed by the Assistant City, the, I'm sorry, the City Manager and myself going out to tour with you onsite, so that we can be shoulder to shoulders and know and see exactly what you do to keep us thriving as a city every single day. Probably one of the most important components of what makes our city run, without question. So saying that, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are vitally important to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Palm Coast, and whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are directors, managers, supervisors, and employees at all levels of government, who are responsible for the beautification, rebuilding, and waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Palm Coast to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year two thousand and twenty-four marks the sixty-fourth Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of May nineteenth through twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-four be officially designated as National Public Works Week. And with that, I'd ask you all to please applaud these fine employees, directors, managers, for all the work they do for every one of us and for themselves every single day. So thank you all. Matt, you have some words? Let me, I'll convey this to you.
Yeah, so this year, the theme from the APWA is advancing quality of life for all. And I would say that that goes hand in hand with the why statement that this team came up with not that long ago, which is to provide excellent service today and continue to improve for tomorrow. So that's something that, that they came up with and something that they felt that they wanted to strive for in the future. What I will say, kind of echoing on the mayor's comments, is most times you don't know what's going on because it's going so well. You only think about the efforts that go into what they do every day when something goes wrong. Unfortunately, we don't take the, the opportunity to just say thank you on a recurring basis. So this one week gives us that opportunity to do so, but I would ask that you recognize your neighbors, your fellow residents who work for the city and take so much pride in what they do every day, anytime you get an opportunity to do so. So I would like to say thank you for allowing me to be your director. Thank you for your professionalism and all the hard work you put in every day.
So in addition to the skill and the experience that you all bring to the job every day, to hear your director explain that you are also looking forward to the future, you are challenging yourselves, the, the, the next round of applause I'd like to hear is for the very special pride that each one of these employees adds and lends to their job. Just their, their motto that they have come up with tells me what kind of pride they have in what they do every day. That's something that you all come to, that's a synergy that comes together as a group, and I applaud you all very, very much for that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you, I appreciate you.
Did we get a copy of proclamation made of page one of the employees, so they didn't take it home to their families? Councilman Clufus will deliver the second proclamation this morning.
For sure. Do we have anyone here to receive our National Water Safety Month? There's a joke in here about diving in headfirst or something like that. Okay. Whereas the City of Palm Coast recognizes the vital role that swimming and aquatics-related activities play in providing good physical and mental health and enhancing the quality of life for all people. Whereas it is important to understand the essential role that education regarding water safety plays in preventing drowning and recreational water-related injuries. And whereas the City of Palm Coast offers swim lessons, community outreach programs, private pool safety PSAs, and the Pool Safety Day event to educate the public and spread the practice of water safety. And whereas the City of Palm Coast Parks and Recreation Department maintains first aid CPR and AED certifications for all staff, as well as additional lifeguarding certifications for its aquatics employees. Whereas we recognize the vital importance of communicating water safety rules and programs to families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors to the beach. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Palm Coast that the month of May two thousand and twenty-four be declared as National Water Safety Month, signed at this twenty-first day of May two thousand and twenty-four. Mayor David Alvin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and the staff. We are having Pool Safety Day on May twenty-fifth, and we would like you to join us. It's going to be from one to four, and we have swim lessons available at palmcoastgov.com or parksandrecreations.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thirdly, on our agenda item here is to present the certificates to the Leadership Intern Training Experience, or what we acronym and call the LIGHT Team, which I would love for the community to know just a little bit more about. So if you could share just the bullets on what their challenge has been.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Lauren Johnston, Acting City Manager. I have before you the graduating class of our LIGHT Team, and they have really gone through an intensive year-long program where they not only completed some projects, one you saw last week with your city comprehensive plan, where they got into the schools and got data from the school's kids about what they want to see as their future, Imagine Twenty-Fifty. And then they worked on an internal project of strengthening the communications within the organization and looks at some technology opportunities. SharePoint, if you will, is what they nailed down. They had the opportunity to meet and greet some other executives in the community and share some lessons learned, and then they went through an exercise, learning objectives through a John Maxwell book. So we are really excited for them to graduate today.
One of the obvious benefits of a program like this is, you know, we think often about succession planning. In other words, how can we develop the best talent that has the most experience within our own community and bring them forward so that they may apply for and perhaps hold leadership positions in the future? So in my opinion, this would be one of those steps that affords or makes that opportunity possible in the future, because I can't think of anything more rewarding than to work your way up through the various levels within the city, gain that experience, and then become a part of the leadership team for the future. So congratulations to each and every one of you.
The first one is Rain Marty. Raylene Bowman. Travis Sabatini. And Crystal Gardner.
Now, this is the LIGHT Team, so I expect at least one of you to step forward and have something to say about your experience. I think we all need to say something a little bit first of all. Go ahead.
That's management right there.
Good morning. I'm usually looking from the cameras from my desk, watching. I'm Crystal, and I work in the IT department. I'd like to mention that I came into this team not knowing what to expect, and I'm glad that I applied. Throughout our mission, the five of us no longer are strangers who worked at the same place. We've gained knowledge and are now closer as coworkers. I believe that we've become and continue to become stronger as leaders within ourselves and possibly influence others. With our selected projects, we are steps closer to helping the employees of the City of Palm Coast with communication methods, and we also took upon the opportunity to reach out to our young citizens of the City of Palm Coast by providing them with the opportunity to help plan the future of Palm Coast by allowing their ideas to be heard. I must say that Denise Bevan, our former City Manager, has helped us focus on ourselves as leaders or future leaders, whether at work or outside of work. Ms. Bevan provided a safe space during our time and was very open to our discussions and ideas. She also provided access to learn more about how she and other leaders in our city, county, and surrounding counties work. I would like to say thank you to Denise Bevan and Doug Akins for allowing me this opportunity. Heidi Petito, Dale Martin, Jonathan Lord, LaShaka Moore, Angela O'Brien, and Marcus Sanfilippo, Dr. Alvin Jackson, Mayor Alvin, the students of the SGA and FPA, I'm sorry, FPS groups at the four schools that we visited, and Lauren Johnston for stepping in where we needed her assistance. I would also like to thank my team, Dan, Raylene, Rain, and Travis for making it easy to work together. It was a great experience. Thank you.
So I would hope that I can speak for all of the City Council and, and leadership, that we are fully behind and support those that have put together this fine program, and you can look forward to our continued support in the future, because I do believe this is a basic building block for a good government and for the future. So congratulations to you all. Very, very worthwhile. Thank you all. We now move to item E on the agenda, which is public participation. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the Communications and Marketing Director seated in the back. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point, avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So with that, I would invite the first member of the public that would like to speak to me at this time? Yes, sir? Either one. Okay. There we go. Okay. Robin McDonald, Palm Coast. People get up here every week, and they talk about things that are right, things that are wrong. But a lot of times, sometimes people fill out request cards, and sometimes they get answers, and sometimes they don't. Well, what I'd like to suggest is maybe we could sit down with the department heads that are all sitting back here, and we could sit down with a one-on-one meeting with the mayor and the directors, and we could sit down and try to get the problems resolved, rather than sitting and beating their heads against the wall. Well, I have an issue, because I have a grandson that would like to go play in the parks, but of the twelve parks we have, they're not all handicapped, some of them are not handicapped accessible. Well, instead of spending money trying to fix parks that are never going to get fixed, we know that, maybe we could spend the money on putting more handicapped accessible parks. So maybe we could sit down with the Director of Parks and Recreation and the mayor, so maybe we could ask the Director of Parks and Recreation to come up, and we could sit down at his convenience, and is the Parks and Recreation Director here? Yes. Mr. McDonald here. Mr. McDonald, okay, go ahead. He is here, yes. Okay. Can we ask him to come up and? No, no. As we agreed, your suggestion was to have a meeting so that we can handle the, the questions with great detail. Okay, so maybe we could direct, ask the Director of Parks and Recreation at his convenience and the mayor, and I'm retired, so I could come up at any time, and we could sit down and go over all the parks, and we could spend the money to fix the parks, so that families that have kids that have special needs, instead of pissing away millions of dollars to fix a park that ain't never going to get fixed, Holland Park, we could spend that money to add special needs parks. How would that sound? Appreciate your, your comment very much, and the City Manager has a note to schedule that, that form of meeting. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I keep coming up here and talking about the speeding and the excessive traffic on Florida Park Drive, and I know, and I know y'all just did a study, so I would like, if the city can just answer what they plan to do, because, I mean, I can continue to come up here and talk about it, but I would like to know what are the plans from the city. I don't know when they'll come out, but that's what I'm looking for, is just to find out what the plans are. Thank you.
You want to address that? Let's just address it at the end of public comment?
Sure, Mayor.
Okay, if you would. Thank you. Next speaker, please, just in case there's a redundant question.
Good morning, Jeffrey Seib. The rapid rate of growth in the City of Palm Coast is creating many challenges that will only increase in severity as we continue to grow, unless we begin to address them one by one. We have a glimpse of the future with the freshwater supply issues we are experiencing right now, that may, at a later date, be a game changer. The road infrastructure, that we have at least finally heard of a plan to provide some relief, and drainage, which unless changes are made in how we go about the building project approval process in order to protect more of our natural assets, which can help with the drainage and water supply issues. The city's lobbyist in Tallahassee, in her presentation, reported a seventy-five million dollar pending appropriation for the Metansus Parkway Extension West. In this year's city budget, I see nine million dollars from transportation impact fee funds for this project. Not to be naive about the state appropriation process, but all of that money, in addition to the twenty-five million already appropriated, could sure be put to effective use right here, right now. The city needs to continue the infill process, which includes well-maintained and planned improvements to our aging existing infrastructure, with attention to the problems that are growing in community faces, like on Florida Park Drive, the airport, and preserve the green open spaces that make this our home. Keep the focus where it should be, because we all could be distracted by the shiny new object over there. In addition, we don't need any more project like this, which will be a money drain before any revenue comes into the city budget, as in building impact fees and ad-alarm taxes from out there, which are years away. From a focus standpoint, the water supply is at the top. Building out west will take away from wells out west. With Banel now also growing like crazy, where are we going to get our water from? When the late John Nets was mayor, we had a presentation from a firm that would build a several hundred million dollar water desalinization barge off of Flagler Beach. That didn't fly. We have to work with what we have to work with.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Jeremy Davis, P Section.
Good morning.
May fifteenth, we had a nice rainstorm, three, three AM. Thank you for reaching out to me, Clufus. I appreciate that. But y'all were probably sleeping, and, or maybe the thunder woke you up. It was a great lightning storm, for sure. But I have water coming in my back, back area by my pool, like I said, what happened. It, it's nonsense that the city of staff wants to come out six, seven hours later to take pictures. I would like that to happen during the storm. Experience what the hell I'm experiencing, because I have to brush the water out. And I hear people sighing, I appreciate that. Come, come experience what I'm experiencing, before you start sighing and judging and thinking this is BS, that I'm just making this shit up. I'm tired of it. I shouldn't have to come here every, every meeting and ask to make it make sense. Just like when I wake up and look left every day, I look at this stupid house that's on a hill, the only hill on Parody Lane. Just like this hat, makes it, it's, it's big, right? It's a funny thing. It puts smiles on people's faces. I wear it here because it, it's I wear it here because it's funny, just like everything y'all are doing. It's funny, just like everything they're doing, funny. It doesn't make sense. Yes, they are starting to correct some things. I've noticed that. I have noticed that, but they're not doing a darn thing for me. And that's where I'm peed off. You know that. This weekend, I almost caught on fire. And here, I would rather burn than have to wake up flooding. That I would rather do. I would rather burn than drown, and y'all are drowning me. Poor neighbors hadn't even moved in. They know I'm upset and they know I'm going to put a lawsuit on them as soon as it happens because water is approaching me. And y'all know it. Everyone here knows it. None of y'all are dumb. I think none of y'all are dumb. But from what I've seen aloud happen, there's a lot of dumb things that have happened. And each and every one of you see it in our own city. So y'all need to stop and think about what the hell y'all are doing because this is not acceptable. It's not acceptable in my books, it's not acceptable in your book. I know that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address me at this time? Yes, sir.
My name is Mr. Siegfried, and I wanted to explain...
If you could pull it just a little bit closer so that the folks online can hear. Thank you.
I'd like to understand why we can't have something on my property, which I pay taxes on. They said I had no HOA here. I moved here. I'm here less than two years. And they citation me with a boat being on my property. It was only a 17-foot boat. I did a major takedown in the back. Got it all set up for the boat before I even bought the boat. The only thing I didn't figure out was the width of the trailer. So I had to cut the fence so it was on the side of the house for two days. I moved it into the back. Somebody took pictures of it and I get a letter on my garage door saying that I'm not allowed to have a boat. Now, I know the law passed a long time ago. That's when people weren't down here. There was only a handful of people compared to what you have today. There's millions of people down here now. And I would like to know why this law still stays into effect. This Florida is supposed to be the land opportunity for fishing. And I served in the service. I came down with an illness called aged orange. I can't walk too far, so the boat kept me busy in the backyard, cleaning it, doing this, doing that. And now I don't have it there no more. So I can't afford to keep it in storage and I can't afford to go out of the house and go down there. And I don't know what to do now. You know, I bought this house because they said there was no HOA. I came from an HOA in Arizona. And boy, I tell you, this is like being a Gestapo. You can't have that. They tell you everything you're supposed to do and it's permits for this, permits for that. I bought this house. It's got to be 50 years old, 60 years old, and I had to redo it. I sunk all my money into this house and now I got to move because I don't like the area no more because it's not what I thought it would be. There's no freedom here. Everything is law. And it's worse than HOA. That's how I feel. All right?
I thank you for your comment. Are there any remaining members of the public that would like to address me at this time in public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. And if I could, let me go to city manager first. Can you, you want to address a couple of those briefly?
Sure. We'll work on scheduling the meeting with Mr. McDonald on the special needs at our parks. For Mr. Carr, we have the, on your scheduled workshop at June, on June 11th, we have a presentation on the Neighborhood Speed Safety Study, and it will include some options for city council.
Didn't we just have a dozen initiatives related to the public at our last meeting on, on actual projects that are funded and underway? I mean, I think it was, I was 19 altogether, if I'm not mistaken. So maybe we can put that information out more clearly to the public so that they can see the actual steps that are being taken and the money that's being invested in this infrastructure.
Sure. We can work on that, Mayor. And then for Mr. Seib, I spoke to our chief of staff, or I'm sorry, Mr. Davis. I spoke to our chief of staff, Mr. Di Lorenzo. He visited Mr. Davis's home Saturday afternoon after that significant rainstorm and spoke to Mrs. Davis, if I'm not mistaken. And we're still working on mitigation options with D.R. Horton on that piece of property.
So my, my understanding is that you have, you invited the builder in who has shown a level of cooperation to mitigate what the, what the current situation is. And please remind me, the first meeting of the Vice Mayor Committee for...
The Residential Drainage Committee is scheduled for June 4th.
June the 4th.
And the agenda is posted on our city, when the agenda is available, it'll be posted on our city website.
So we have all of those activities in progress. Very good. Thank you for that. Now, city council members, let me start with Councilwoman Pontieri. Would you like to comment on any of the public comment this morning, Councilwoman?
Nothing on the public comment, just really quickly on the proclamations. So I wasn't, because I'm obviously not there. I wanted to give a special thanks to Public Works, particularly with all the work that they do on special projects. People don't realize how much they really do. And so I agree with Mr. Mansell. I don't think enough gratitude is really shown to that department. They're kind of behind the scenes, just doing a lot for our city every day, so just want to thank them. With regards to water safety, this is something that's really near and dear to me. We have way too many drownings in the state with regards to kids. And just to let people know, you can get your kids swimming and in the water and swim lessons as young as six months old. So, you know, definitely just want to kind of encourage people to look into that. And then wanted to congratulate our light team graduates, all the work that they've done and the dedication to really improve their stature and their status within our city organization. I encourage more people to join the light team in the future and just wanted to congratulate them. So nothing on public comment at this time, Mayor, but wanted to mention those regarding our proclamations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council members, any final comments on the public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I too would like to comment on the proclamation given to the Public Work Department. I see them out there working so often, know some of them personally, and I just want to thank them for all the work that they do to help to keep our city of Palm Coast the beautiful city that it is. I was very proud to see all of them up here this morning, and I just think that they do a great job and they should be recognized for what they do to keep this city so beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
I have nothing to add.
Very good. All said. Anything final from the city manager? Very good. Then I'll close the, the public comment section of the agenda this morning. We go to the minutes. I would ask for a motion to approve the business meeting minutes of May the 7th, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve. Can I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Clufus has provided a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Does the clerk have the count? Thank you. And similarly, the minutes for approval for a workshop meeting held on May the 14th, 2024, may I ask for a motion?
A motion.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor.
Second.
A second from Councilman Clufus. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Six, which is resolutions. And councillor, if you would, go ahead and read that into the record for us, please. And by the way, welcome back and thank you for your service. You can share with us what you actually had to do, but I know you had to travel and kept us as a nation out of harm's way. So thank you for returning to the dais today.
Not a problem, there, Samir. Happy to be back. Just want to clarify, which Resolution G5 or G6 are you wanting me to read?
So number five is the Town Center Tract 8 Technical Site Plan?
Resolution 2024-XX, Town Center Tract 8 Technical Site Plan, Tier 3, Application Number 5598.
Good morning. Bill Hoover, Senior Planner with Community Development. The Town Center Tract 8, it's on 67 acres located on the east side of Town Center Boulevard, and it starts about at the traffic circle with Central Avenue and then extends northward about one-half mile. Here's a little bit more of a close-up view. Hillpoint LLC, they purchased the property back about six months ago, and they have submitted a technical site plan for a multifamily rental community for 264 homes. And since it's a technical site plan with at least 100 residential units, it goes to planning board first and then to city council. So the same owner recently completed a project, I think we reviewed like three years ago or so, and that was on Point Grand Apartments on Pine Lakes Parkway, north of Palm Coast Parkway. And that project is in the rental stage right now. Town Center is comprised of two designations, the DRI Urban Core Area, that's where the development primarily is taking place, and then we have a lot of conservation shown in light green. And then there's a few places, there's a canal designation, which is shown in light blue, and that one up there, I think, is like an old fill pit that's north of the site. And the site is part of the Town Center PUD, and so that's the area shown in the royal blue, the, in west of the interstate, those are other MPDs located on the east side of I-95. The Town Center DRI in PUD or MPD, it's about 1,600 acres and it was proved back in 2003. And on this plan, which is the Town Center Master Development Plan, the site is more specifically designated urban center. And the urban center is intended for uses that are higher in intensity and also in a pedestrian-friendly environment. And this is the project's site plan. The north arrow is to the left and you can see where Town Center Boulevard and then Imagine School is directly across Town Center from the bigger portion of the site. And, and this is an enlargement of just the development area so that you can see where the clubhouse is, for instance. And most of these units are going to have some pretty nice views of stormwater ponds and preservation areas. And these preservation areas east of the site actually extend all the way to I-95, which is about a third of a mile. Maximum building height is 80 feet. We also have a minimum height in this urban center of 24 feet, and they're at 41 feet, so they meet both the minimum and maximum building height. Impervious surface ratio is sort of irrelevant. They're at, it's required to be at 85%. They're only at 14%. That's because of all the stormwater ponds and all the conservation area. So parking is based on 1.75 spaces for the, I believe all these are two-bedroom units. And that would come up with, and then we, 462. And then we have a clubhouse that's over 10,600 square feet, so that requires another 42, 43 parking spaces. So they're required to have a total of 505, including 11 ADA spaces and 84 standard garage and four ADA garage. And then bicycle parking for residential is 10% of the vehicle. And obviously, this is a great place for bicycling. I'd say one of the best in the city. They're providing 597 spaces, including 24 ADA. And what happens on those ADA, each building is sort of required to have one at closest to the entrance. So that's why you'll frequently see, here's the minimum standard by the state, but to meet the other standards, you've got to go above and beyond that. And they're providing four ADA garage, garages and 80, I'm sorry, four ADA and 84 standard garages. Minimum building setbacks, 20 feet along Town Center Boulevard, they're providing 40. And then the other three setbacks, they're way over 100 feet, so it's sort of irrelevant. The applicants submitted, there are architectural plans and landscape plans to the Town Center Architectural Review Committee. Those have been approved and those are attached in black and white form. And the, when the applicant's team comes up here, they've got some colored that they can show you. So these are the five key review criteria for each development order and also for each rezoning that you get to see. Criteria A, it needs to not conflict with the public interest. Staff's findings are, it is in the public interest as it is consistent with the Palm Coast, I'm sorry, Town Center DRI, urban core and conservation designation areas, and also the Town Center PUD. It needs to be consistent with the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. And staff's determined it does meet that and it supports five goals, policies, or objectives of the future land use element. And that's, will be in more detail on the following slides. Goal 1.1, preserve the character of residential communities, prevent urban sprawl, and protect open spaces and environmental resources while providing a mix of land uses, housing types, services, and job opportunities in mixed-use centers and corridors. Objective 114, promote compact and contiguous development, a mixture of land uses, and discourage urban sprawl. Policy 1142, the MPD zoning district shall allow residential housing types to be mixed with retail, service, office, commercial, and other land uses. Potential areas for MPDs, including PUDs, are strategically located throughout the city to promote infill development and to maximize vehicular and pedestrian accessibility. Policy 1145, land use patterns will be required to be efficient and not disproportionately increase the cost of providing and maintaining public facilities, as well as providing housing and transportation strategies that will foster energy conservation. Goal 1.2, maintain the community's quality of life through preservation and enhancement of environmental and community resources. Getting back to Criteria C, it must not impose a significant hardship or liability on the city. Staff's determined the public infrastructure is already in place, so this is considered our favorite type of development, which is infill development. Criteria D, must not create an unreasonable hazard or nuisance. And staff reviewed this. It does not come close to creating this. For instance, in the traffic study, that's based on 264 multifamily homes, which, those actually generate like about six and a half trips per unit compared to a single-family home, which is over nine. So a little bit less. So that's why the daily trips are 1,768 during weekday, 105 AM peak hour trips, and 134 PM peak hour trips. The traffic... AM peak hour trips, and 134 PM peak hour trips. The traffic engineer determined that all roadway segments and intersections within the project's study area were shown to operate at an acceptable level of service with the project's traffic included. And finally, the last criteria, must comply with all applicable government standards. Yet, they've applied for a St. John's permit, and they have received that. There's 21 acres of wetlands on the property. They're not impacting any of those wetlands. Additionally, their environmental ists has walked the site, and there's no endangered or threatened species on the site. For public participation, there's no neighborhood meeting required for this project. And then per Table 2.2, we don't post the orange signs or run newspaper ads for technical site plans. The Planning Board reviewed this last month, on April 17. By a 6-0 vote, they recommended approval to City Council, and no one from the public spoke regarding the project. So the next step is pretty simple on this. They submit for building permits. The Planning and Land Development Regulation Board found the project in compliance with Comprehensive Plan, the Town Center PUD, and Land Development Code, and recommended approval to City Council of Technical Site Plan Tier 3 for Town Center Track 8, Application Number 5598. And the applicant's team is in attendance, and they have a PowerPoint.
So, Bill, is the applicant would like to make a presentation?
Yes, Mayor. We can make a very brief presentation. Some of the slides are the same, and we can skip through them, and appreciate it. So for the record, my name is Ray Spofford. I'm Vice President of Planning with England, Tim's and Miller. We are the planners and engineers on the new apartment community. With me here today is Nick Everly. He is a Senior Director of Land Planning and Entitlement with Hillpoint, and he is representing Hillpoint, obviously.
Okay, so the development area on this side, let me back up. This is one of the elevations that was mentioned by Mr. Hoover, showing the planned apartment buildings and the amenities surrounding it. So a lot of attention was given to providing a pedestrian-friendly environment. In the bottom, you see Town Center Boulevard. The multi-use trail is on the east side of it, confronting the apartment buildings. So we pulled the buildings up to Town Center Boulevard, and the parking is in the rear, and the garages are behind the buildings, so that as you drive along or walk along Town Center Boulevard, you have a lot more visual interest. Next slide.
Go ahead, next one. As Mr. Hoover covered, we are within the urban center classification in the Town Center at Palm Coast, DRI and MPD, and it's shown there in the star on Track 8. Next slide. Okay, go ahead to the next slide. So for active and passive recreation, the active recreation areas are shown in the green shading. We have the amenity center, which is connected via a trail network along the stormwater ponds behind the buildings. And then the more passive recreation is shown and shaded in blue. Next slide. Just in summary again, as Mr. Hoover covered, the DRI and MPD allows a multifamily on this track by right. We received our Architectural Review approval, and we're consistent with all regulations, and we received unanimous recommendation for approval from the Planning and Land Development Board.
So, I appreciate that. So, I do have a comment, and then City Council, of course, will weigh in. And Councilor, keep me within the guardrails. This is a comment. I'm taking a closer and closer look. You mentioned the word, our builded, you know, infill projects, so we're taking advantage of the land that's owned in the Town Center area for these projects. I notice that traffic, and I'm trying to look forward, these projects are, you know, somewhat two-dimensional, and certainly to the public as well. I'm trying to look forward as to what the consequences of these projects might hold for us, even though there is compliance with regard to the state requirements and the regulatory agency requirements, and eventually there'll be zoning requirements and all of that. The question I have, and I don't want to overlook without some discussion, is we are restricted or congested with some traffic in the current traffic pattern which flows by this proposed site. And I'm going to ask if the developer can offer some suggestion on how we could mitigate or avoid what surely will become a major area of congestion in the foreseeable future. So, looking at the maps, I see some possibilities, but again, my question is more looking to collaborate together with the developer to find a solution which will be good for the future residents of a project like this, and also for our surrounding community. So, can you help me with regard to, and I'm specifically referring to the piece number 1.1.4.2 with regard to vehicular flow. And I'm thinking about the right, the ability for the potential for turn lanes on the northbound Lake Avenue, as well as the turn lane for Town Center Boulevard at Lake Avenue. Can you, have you had a chance to look at that, and do you see the same thing that I'm seeing?
Yes, Mayor, we have. We, Mr. Gian contacted us yesterday and raised the issue. We had a traffic study done that did not identify any required off-site improvements. However, we understand the issue with the school at the intersection with Lake Avenue, and that's our primary entrance. A right, northbound right D-cell lane could be accommodated at that intersection. We would ask for two things if we do this. One, we would like to submit the plans for such a right turn lane as a separate plan set to be reviewed and approved. And two, so we can proceed with development, and so that the right D-cell lane would not be, need to be constructed until CO of the last apartment building, if that's possible. We would like to do that as well. We also understand the proposed development across the street on the north side of Lake Avenue is constructing a northbound left turn lane on Town Center Boulevard. And we've, you know, we talked to Mr. Gian yesterday, willing to cooperate with Legacy and their project, and, you know, hopefully accommodate a left turn, southbound left turn lane into the site on Town Center Boulevard as well.
So, I think this collaborative approach especially, I'm glad that you identified that there will be yet another project to be considered in close proximity. It's very hard for the community to realize all of this from, you know, from, at this stage in the planning. So, my goal is to help them understand, and to the best of our ability, forecast what surely will be, you know, congested areas in the future, and see if there aren't some, you know, rather straightforward mitigation techniques that we can use to do this. So, I appreciate your discussion and collaborative effort with staff to bring this through. They would be the ones to tell you procedurally how you can step forward with this, but I do personally thank you for that. And I would ask City Council members if you have comments or questions at this point in time in the presentation while we have the applicant here.
My only comment, I'm just going to piggyback off of what the mayor said, because I come through that area quite often, and right now, I avoid it because of the traffic congestion there. So, that would be a major concern of mine also. Thank you, Mayor, for that comment.
Yep. You guys piggybacked on the traffic. Could you just give us exactly what the definition is between the active and the passive recreation space on the one overlay? There is the green and the blue areas, just for the public's definition to be able to know what's active and what's passive recreation areas?
Yeah, active-based recreation is typically some kind of activity. It's a ball field, a swing and pull, walking trail. Passive is more of what you consider open space. You can walk, it's a lawn area. That's the difference.
Understood. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, any comment on the project?
Yeah, I have nothing.
Okay. Councilwoman Pontieri, would you like to comment on the presentation thus far?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I can appreciate your concern about the turn lanes. I actually was speaking with staff about this yesterday. I have the same concern. And I can appreciate that a traffic study was done, and that pursuant to that traffic study, it's not showing that the turn lanes are necessary, but I think that we can all agree that turn lanes are necessary here, if we want to keep the traffic flow at a pace where we are showing that we're concerned about quality of life and, you know, continuing to be safe in that area, particularly with the school being across the street. I can appreciate the applicant also being willing to put in the turn lanes. What I would ask, though, and I was going to motion for this, is that if we approve this site plan today, that rather than waiting until the last building gets a CO for the turn lanes, perhaps we can kind of meet in the middle here and say that 50 percent of the project has its COs, the turn lanes have to be constructed. And I say that because I think, you know, this is quite a few units, and if we wait until the last building has its CO, presumably, people could be moving into the other buildings already, because they would already have their COs. So, we're not really getting ahead of it. We're acting retroactively rather than proactively, which we want to avoid. So, I would say, you know, I would make a motion to approve the site plan, making the turn lanes necessary at 50 percent completion, rather than waiting until the last building has a CO.
Okay, so, Councilwoman, I was going to wait for the motion until public comment, but go ahead. Make your motion since it's fresh. So, I think we all understa, does the clerk have the motion? Okay, so then, before we go to public comment, I'll ask, is there any question on the motion? Pretty straightforward.
It's pretty straightforward. I have some questions for the applicant.
Do you want to hold off before we second?
We can hold off.
Or do you want to second it?
I did have some questions for the applicant.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, how does that sit with you? Is that doable?
Yes.
This motion, is that something you're in agreement with?
Yeah, I just looked to Mr. Everly to make sure that's fine and we're agreeable to, the 50 percent.
That's all. In that case, I'll second the motion.
Good. So the Vice Mayor has seconded the motion. Now, let's continue on with discussion regarding the motion. Yes, sir?
Yeah, good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Yesterday, we discussed with the applicant not only just the northbound right turn lane at the intersection, which will create a four-way intersections. We also, if you take a look at the map that we provided here, it is the improvement by Legacy, which is across the street or north of Imagine School, they're going to provide a northbound left turn lane at this intersection, which basically, in order to do that, they have to expand the row, and it will leave basically an area, it's called, there's a gore area or stripe area there, that is adequate for approximately about 100 feet of southbound left turn lanes. So, I would recommend Council would include the requirement, basically, it's a minimal cost for them to do that. And they can basically work with the Legacy across the street as part of their development improvements in order to provide that, basically, restripe that to the southbound left turn lane. So they would effectively, at the end of the day, the intersection would have, and turn to their development would have southbound left turn and northbound right turn as well.
Okay. So, to my understanding, based on my initial comments before the motion was made, I referred to both of those, the turn lanes from both sides. So I think that, Councilwoman Pontieri, is that your understanding, and is that within the motion that you have made?
Yes, Mayor. And if we need to, for the record, the specifics of Fong's recommendations, then I would incorporate those into the motion.
All right. So I guess, if you wouldn't mind doing that, then I would ask Vice Mayor if you could, based on that clarification, if you'll second.
Yeah.
So, same motion with the clarification from Fong, then we have a motion and a second, so we've discussed it on the dais here. I would add one other thing, that for, over the last year, I've been aware of and worked on a project with regard to the housing development that falls in behind the Imagine School. That's another community. This will also support their, or decrease their congestion in the future as well. So my point being that, as we look at these projects, I think it's worthy of getting into the detail to understand their effect on neighboring projects, both current and what might be the future. So, Fong, so thank you for making sure that we included that other piece in that. So, with that, I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this project this time. I'll come back to you in just a second.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understood the motion.
Go ahead.
I know to understand the right turn lane. The left turn lane, I think our only concern would be, is being held up by another project. So we have no problem re-striping for the left turn lane, southbound on Town Center Boulevard, when it's actually in place. That's not a problem. We just didn't want to be held up. If another project is held up, then we're held up. That's the issue, I think.
So, staff, you guys are in charge of the sequencing of these things. Can you make that commitment?
Yes, Council. I already reached out to the applicant across the street, and we are working on adding that instead of, this project going to be re-striping then. So, it works out, because, you know, essentially, the Legacy will get impact fee credit, because it's considered as off-site improvement. So, I don't think they have an issue with that. I have a meeting with them right after this.
So, you're on the record by staff committing to your not being held up by another project's timeline. I think that was your concern.
That was it.
That's fairly stated.
Yep.
Yeah, the only thing is that we would like their commitment, that just in case if the Legacy is not willing to do that, I don't see why they wouldn't do it, then we would ask them to come back and restripe it, basically. That's what we're asking, yeah.
Okay, so we have a, I have a nod, so, good.
Yes.
All right. Councilwoman Pontieri, based on what you've heard now, any final discussion?
No, Mayor. And I also did also want to thank the applicant for exceeding the minimum requirements. I always want to point that out, when the applicants are mindful of extra parking spaces, don't, you know, fulfill the height requirements or the floor-to-area ratio. I can always appreciate when there's more open space, less height, and more parking spaces than, you know, minimally required. So, thank you to the applicant for doing that as well, and for being willing to work with staff on this traffic issue.
We appreciate staff reaching out to us yesterday. We appreciate it.
Very good. All right. With that, we've been out to the public for comment. Is there any final comment from the dais?
No, thank you.
So, I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Sorry, Ms. Mayor, I don't think we put it out with the public comment.
Well...
Did we?
I thought I did, but...
No.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this project at this time? Seeing no one come forward, then I will close public comment. I'll come back to the dais once again. Are there any final comments? So, then I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, since this is a quasi-judicial, I do need you to go through and do the ex parte.
Any ex parte? I've had none.
I've had none.
Councilwoman Pontieri, any ex parte communication?
No, Mayor.
So, no members of City Council have had any ex parte communication that would affect their decision in this upcoming vote. So with that, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
And yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. And a special thanks to staff, and obviously, for the communication with the applicant. This, I would hope, could be a model for many of the things that we may choose to consider in the future. Working together as the infill process continues is incredibly important. So thank you both for all the work that you did. With that, we'll move to Agenda Letter G, Item Number 6, which is approving a master plan services agreement with Gray Robinson. And Councilor, if you would read that into the record for me, please.
Yes. Resolution 2024-XX, approving a master service agreement with Gray Robinson for Code Board Attorney Services. for Code and, Code Board Attorney Services.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Barbara Grossman, Code Manager. This presentation will cover the item of Hearing Officer Services Item. Florida Statute Section 16203, five, do I want to make sure that's five? Yes, five, stimulates that, stipulates that the local governing body attorney shall either be counseled to an enforcement board or shall represent a municipality or county by presenting cases before the enforcement board, but in no case shall the local governing body attorney serve in both capacities. The city attorney represents staff at the code board hearings since it's already assists staff with code enforcement issues since 2015. Therefore, the code enforcement board is represented by a contracted attorney, which staff follows the purchasing, purchasing policies to contract these services with an attorney in good standing with the Florida bar. The other service is needed for certain code cases is a hearing officer, also known as a special magistrate. The hearing officer hears cases such as parking, trespass, and animal control cases, such as initial determination of dangerous dogs, animal cruelty, neglect, and appeals to initial determination of dangerous dogs. Therefore, the code enforcement board is represented by a contracted attorney, which staff follows the purchasing policies to contract these services with an attorney in good standing with the Florida bar. The other service needed is certain code cases as a hearing officer, as known as a special, am I repeating myself? No. The hearing officer has cases such as parking, trespass, and animal cases such as initial determination of dangerous dogs, animal cruelty and neglect, and appeals initial determination. The city attorney is a charter position hired by city council. City council will evaluate the bids associated with the city attorney. The code board attorney is a contract that staff will advertise bids for attorney services in accordance with the city's purchasing policies per Section 162055 to represent the code enforcement board, since the attorney, city attorney represents staff at the code enforcement hearings, as mentioned previously. Staff recommends to council to adopt 20, Resolution 2024, approving city staff recommendations to council to approve 2024, approving Gray Robinson as the code board attorney and adopt resolution approving Quinteros Wood Petro as the hearing officer. Thank you.
Okay. So basically, so you have a conflict that we have to resolve. We can no longer use the, the attorney, the hearing officer that we had used in the past because we've, you know, we've, we've taken on the firm as our--
They're no longer offering their service. So now we had to go out to bid. And we already have the city attorney representing staff for the code boards. And now we're asking for a new attorney to represent the code enforcement board.
Right. I think city council understands, but just to clarify for the public, that this is, this is a decision and a process to be made by city staff, but then finally approved by city council, but different than the selection of city council's attorney.
Correct.
Okay. Are there questions about why or what we're doing here?
I just want to clarify why. No, I want, I want you to clarify why, or someone to clarify why we have to do this.
So you, you can't have the same attorney representing the code enforcement process as representing us on city council?
But why?
It's written into our, in the charter?
It's, so it's a charter issue that we could change?
Hold on.
There is a Florida statute that's in the presentation.
That's what I wanted to know, the difference. So I guess the other question is, will this cost us any more money than we've presently been spending?
There is, there is a price difference, yes.
And the price difference is?
Some of that is, needs to be negotiated. We have some concerns with what we, the organization that we represented. So we need to go back and negotiate with them to make sure that their amounts are correct.
But I'm just confused by what the price difference is, though.
So the first question would be, so how is pricing handled? In other words, is it done on, is it an hourly thing based on the length of meetings and follow-up and?
It's a proposed cost and it's an hourly figure, but there's some additional costs that we're, we want to talk about with the, with Gray Robinson.
Well, these, this will come back to us as a final decision, including the costs, correct?
No, I don't, no, it does not come back.
So was that means below the threshold?
Hold on. Let's, let's let Jason, let's, let's tie this up.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. I'll do my best, Helena, here. This is standard process is that you, you get the pricing in and then procurement and the project manager negotiate any of the little pieces that are remaining. So we're just following our standard procurement process here.
Okay. So Vice Mayor makes a valid point. So how do we get our, wrap our arms around the, the delta between what we have been paying and what we might be paying? I mean, I think that's a legitimate concern.
The current cost right now is close to $12,000. That's what we paid last year in, in legal fees for code.
And the estimate in the RFP is?
The estimate is 24,750, but there are some concerns during, as they brought up document, reproduction, travel expenses, mailing charges, messenger service, and filing recording fees. All of those are handled by staff, with the exception of travel expense.
But what's the difference between the two?
Okay, so--
Doubled.
Yeah, hold on.
Right, right. Well, from the previous firm, from the previous contract--
Yes.
Right, was 12,000 and change, right? And that, but that's based on actual time, right?
That's correct.
Right. So it's an hourly fee. So if you don't have as many meetings, as many code board hearings, then that changes, right? It fluctuates. It's not a fixed number. It's a fixed number cost on, by, per hour, but not beyond that, okay? They estimated, in their RFP, they estimated their cost to be 24,7--
27,4.
27,4.
So is that because they're going to work half as fast or twice as hard?
Or charge more per hour?
Well, that's what I said.
Actually, their, their charge per hour is a team lead. It's $200 an hour.
And is that what we were previously paying?
We know we paid a little bit less and the, so we're trying to make sure because they're using, you know, like Mr. DiLorenzo said, the code board meeting could be two hours or there could not be a meeting. So that'll adjust, you know, the amount that you pay to the individual. And also our questions are concerning those extra costs that, are they inclusive of that? And therefore, we want to make sure.
So just help me through this. I mean, 100% increase, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that. You have to give me a better understanding as to why. I mean, this is not a COVID supply chain. What's, help me understand this a little better.
Well, we, we went out for RFP.
Yes.
We got two bids. This is the less expensive of the two bids.
Okay. Does the RFP specifically mention what we were or what we desire to pay?
No, it does not.
Okay. So it's open. Okay. Councilwoman Pontieri, would you like to weigh in with a question at this point in time? I'm sorry.
I might be able to help. So it is my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that right before the board today is that you are approving this intent to award and you're also giving the authorization for them to negotiate with Gray Robinson. There is a threshold that you give authorization to the active city manager on, which is delegated down to negotiate and they will not go above that threshold. Once that negotiation is final, then it will be approved. That's what is before the, the council today.
So it's, okay. So this is the normal process for an RFP. I, I do understand that. I'm, I'm a little-- Councilwoman Pontieri, did you have a comment on this item at this time?
I, I do. And it's surrounding the same concerns both you and Vice Mayor expressed. First, my, my concern is I don't think we're ready to make this decision. I think that we need to look at some more costs and particularly, I'm curious as to why staff chose this over the other RFP that was submitted, because the other RFP came from a firm that's local. Therefore, we wouldn't be paying travel costs. This firm is out of Orlando and both their team lead, who is charging $200 an hour, and their shareholder, who is going to charge more than that, I think I read 325 or 350 an hour. So there's no way to really tell how that time will be split up, whether it'll be, you know, the shareholder will be doing more work or the team lead will be doing more work. There can always be intentions, obviously, but we never know who will actually be doing the work. What we do know is that both of them will be traveling from Orlando and that we will certainly be charged for that. So that in itself to me is a reason to maybe go in a different direction and hire, hire the firm that is local. The other concern I have is Gray Robinson's a very large firm. They do represent, I know for a fact, developers and builders. And as we are encountering a lot of issues right now, specifically with this info lot building, I am concerned as we venture into the code enforcement process that there could be potential conflicts of interest that arise between representation of, you know, the code enforcement board versus any potential builders, developers that have been represented by Gray Robinson in the past. So I have a couple concerns and I just don't know, like I said, I don't know that we have enough information at this point in this presentation to make a smart decision, if nothing else, just based on the, the cost issues.
And if, just to help, to help me a little bit, Councilwoman Pontieri, but the conflicts of interest could arise with the local firm as well, I assume.
They, they could. You're very correct, you're correct, Mayor. They very well could. I just know, you know, as a practitioner--
Yeah.
You know, I, I know, I don't know if the other firm, you know, what, to what extent they have represented builders, developers--
Right.
--in the past. I know as a practitioner that Gray Robinson does that prevalently. So I'm just using, you know, my base of knowledge to, to try to benefit the decision-making process.
Barbara, I have to ask you a question. So there's some discomfort here, obviously. With regard to your schedule going forward, I, I think we have to be cautious about not delaying the work that is done or can't be done without legal counsel present. So what kind of window or lack of window do we have in front of us?
Go ahead. So I understand your question, but I do want to give a point of it. So this attorney that they're asking to be hired, he or she literally represents the board at the board hearings. They don't do anything else. There's, there's no other prep. I, myself, when I go to the hearings, I'm the one that represents staff and does the prep events. So literally, they would just be up at the dais during the code board hearings. And is it, to my understanding, correct me, Ms. Grossman, if I'm wrong here, but the prior firm, they will still be on until we hire a new one?
That is correct.
So we do have a, yes, okay, a bridge, so that we're not going to stop somebody else's progress in any way? Okay. I, I'd like to hear, here's what I need to hear from city council members. So what is it you want to know to make yourself more comfortable in coming to a decision to approve allowing staff to negotiate? Is it, do you want to be more specific about what they're going to negotiate to? Or help me understand, I can't just, you know, allow this to delay. I'll need to know what it is you want to have happen.
I'm just doubling the amount in one year is just unacceptable to me. And that is my concern. My second concern with Councilwoman Pontieri is the travel time. We have local firms. I don't know if we need to put this out to bid again. I don't know if we need to put it out to bid with the suggested price or hourly cost, but we're paying 12. Now we're going to be paying 24, maybe, probably. That I have a problem with.
Let's clarify that. So the 24 is a forecast based on unknowns. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that, Counselor, I assume would be a conservative estimate on the high end to make sure that they cover whatever their projected, could, could also come in at 12.
Mr. Mayor, I have to tell you, my own personal experience with my attorneys on various cases, whenever they said you're going to spend $40,000, it was normally 50,000. I've never seen an attorney come under. No offense to my attorneys who are out there listening, but I mean, this is what they do. Again, I, I just think we are just saying, okay, you will pay twice as much. I, I find that unacceptable. I can't, I can't approve that.
So is there a number that you would like to?
Yeah, 12, maybe 13. But I think, or maybe an hourly rate that was equivalent to what our hourly rate was.
Now, isn't this all based on hourly rates and their projection forward?
Yes, it is.
Right.
But there's a couple of incidentals in there that, that is what we need to negotiate.
So I mean, and I, I understand the points about travel. So what does travel represent in the course of, of, of a year? I mean, is it a big number? I, I don't know what it represents.
It's, that's probably what doubles it because it's two hours travel each way, probably, from Orlando to--
So it's that much money?
So I would say if you're, yes. And what they're stating right now, that's why we want to negotiate.
Okay. Well, I guess the only suggestion I can make, and then I'll listen to city council members, is I think what I'd like to do is offer staff instruction to go back and get that negotiated and then come back to us. I-- There's an obvious discomfort right now with just a, a, even though it's a forecast, and Vice Mayor, I don't disagree that that usually would lead to an increase. That-- Here, we're not going to be slowing your progress down, other than the, the transition. I'd like to hear from each city council member, if we give direction to staff to go negotiate those two pieces. And if they can't, they can't, then, then you're down to one, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Councilman Clufus?
I think that's totally fair. Give them the ammunition to go back there, negotiate, see if they can get us down to something that's more akin to what we were paying. See what they parry back with to, you know, rebuke. But I think that's totally a good game plan is give them the power to be able to go negotiate and hopefully bring back something that's a little bit closer to appease our appetite for cost.
Uh, Councilwoman?
I also would be in agreement with that.
One question, though. You'd mentioned there was another firm that was local that also put a bid in for this, but they were more money?
Yes, they were 250 an hour.
250 an hour, but they don't have the travel time?
That's correct.
So does that in effect make them--
Well, that's--
Is that something we can go back to them at and get them, their price down? Because that travel time, like you said, is four hours.
I'd, I'd have to talk with procurement.
Yeah.
Mayor, City Council. Yeah, I think we're wading into a procurement kind of concern here. This was an RFP. There was a group of individuals that ranked those firms. There was a difference in, in experience of code between the two firms. So we want to, you know, let's, we, we need to stick with our procurement policy here.
So Counselor, based on, this is a unique process and procedure because staff is doing it and city council has to approve it with regard to attorney. I mean, I'm inclined to ask for a more detailed presentation post their direction to negotiate the best possible arrangement that they can. Is that, does that violate the RFP process where we stand with it right now?
I would say no, but I do want to make sure the council members understand that what they were coming towards you with was to ask permission to negotiate on the city. And right now, with what you have in front of you, you guys are not happy with that. Is that correct?
Yes, but, but permission to negotiate, but only with one firm, right?
Yes. Because it, right now where we're at is because the way, as Mr. Daniel Rosa said, your procurement policy is you have to give an intent to award.
Right.
They've done that process. Now, once they have done the intent to award, now you have to approve that and say, okay, we give you permission to negotiate, almost like, similar when you guys hired my firm.
All right. So my feeling, and I'll ask city council members for their individual input, is that we are not comfortable approving that, that intent to award, negotiation to attend to award at this time, without some additional information.
Yeah. I would say if you would want some information, maybe give staff direction of what they, you would like.
Right. So let me just go down the line so that you know, go ahead.
I have a little bit more information that may be helpful. So our current hourly rate is 225 per hour and we, with $150 an hour for the travel rate. And where are they located?
Orlando.
And they're also located in Orlando.
Right. How fast do they drive?
Do they have a red Ferrari?
The speed limit, sir.
And Mr. Mayor, just one thing I just realized. So our current firm is also located in Orlando. That currently works here. So I know that was a question that came up about travel time, but it would be still the same type of travel time you'd be dealing with that we currently are.
Okay. City Manager, do you have enough to lay this out so we could have a detailed expense sheet that really shows us what this is going to cost and what's being committed to?
Yes, Mayor. We can put together that matrix before it comes to you.
Compared, compared to what we have enjoyed over this past year?
Yes.
I think only then with the line items can we come to a conclusion.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, but what are our options here, though?
To deny it and start the process? To deny it and start the process again?
Start the process over again.
Is that correct, counselor?
Yes.
So if we're not happy with the price, and we can't get this price down, that, to me, seems to be the option.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it would be what your next step. Now, is there somebody else out there? I don't know.
I don't know.
But I can only move one step at a time. Now, if you're not, if we're not willing to approve them today, that's the only step forward I can see right now.
And that's fine.
With staff direction.
And in your agenda packet, Mayor, was the ranking sheets, it was more in the criteria than just price. It was also experience.
I know.
The team's qualifications, all of that was in that.
So your council right now is focused, obviously, on budget. So I do understand that there are other items in terms of experience with this particular component of the law, with, you know, code and everything else, but we are numbers oriented right now, and that's kind of what we were offered upfront. So I think we need to clear the decks on that first, before we can get to those other layers.
I guess I have a question maybe for Marcus, for our attorney here, because I'm not a lawyer, so I don't understand. But but on, as far as experience with code enforcement issues, how complex is that on a legal sort of, you know, basis? I mean, there's all sorts of different types of law, but code enforcement should be fairly cut and dry and simple, I would think.
I never you would use the word simple, unfortunately. It's, it's, it's just like any other government practice. You have to be able to apply the law, apply the statute. But there are rules. You want to make sure people have good experience in that and advising, because you start day one. So I would not use the word simple.
All right. Well, maybe that that was probably a simple word that I shouldn't have used, but how complex is it then compared to other aspects of?
If you want to ask, is how how valuable is experience in terms of helping?
How hard is it to learn this and catch up for?
So you're asking me a general question, and I think this is a specific facts question, because there are cases that could be very complicated, that you want to make sure that they're advising your board appropriately, and that the board is following all rules and procedures. I wouldn't want someone up on that dais that has never done a code enforcement before.
Of course, let me help you with the, here's, here's what my concern is. So I think we need to find a correct experience level to avoid something coming back to us in the form of a liability or a lawsuit that that we erred on, that could cost us, you know, an unknown amount of money. I think that's where the danger lies.
Yes, thank you.
So but we'll, we'll work through this. I, let me go to each city coun, Councilwoman Pontieri, if you won't mind, let's start with you. Are you comfortable directing staff to come back with an additional presentation with some of this detail so that we can hash through it more more comfortably?
I am, Mayor. I will say, when I was looking at the the two responses to the RFP, it's very clear that Gray Robinson has more experience. So I think that staff made the right decision in picking that firm. My concern, as we've all expressed, is the cost. I think if we can get the travel cost down to what we were paying at the one fifty an hour, that would be helpful. And then if we can get the shareholder cost down closer to maybe two seventy-five an hour rather than the three or three twenty-five, because I know the associate hourly, I think, was two hundred. So if we can get that shareholder hourly down to make it more comparable to what we're paying now, you know, there's going to probably be somewhat of an increase, because everything has gone up, as you know, right? So we should anticipate somewhat of an increase, but not a doubling. And that's not acceptable. I'm definitely on the side of Vice Mayor with that. So if we can get the travel hourly down, and then that shareholder hourly down, that would pacify me as far as moving forward with this firm.
So I think from a, from staff's perspective, I think that that sets the bar, that's your target, and then you'll come back to us and let us know how successful you were. And Councilwoman Clufus, comment?
Yep, just a quick question. How many meetings, and we're talking about an annual situation here, how many meetings are there? How many times would they have to come up here?
Normally eleven meetings a year, depending on what the holiday, like a Fourth of July or something like that, they may not. But it is a monthly meeting.
Okay.
And it is state statute and noticed, so it's, it's a two-month process to get an individual into. Where the time comes in is it could change between how many cases? We have, could average between forty and sixty cases a month.
Yep.
So that would reduce the time in which they're here.
I was just doing a little simple arithmetic, just to try to figure out what, how many, how much higher of an estimation of hours that they were going to be applying while they were up here on the cases minus the travel. And it's fair. So it seems like they're estimating that the current load, they're going to have to spend more time than previous, right? Is that, yeah, so, okay, I understand, and I'm comfortable with advising staff, the way we were discussing, to be able to go back and renegotiate some of these rates. But it also sounds like they're probably anticipating on the higher end of this, you know, expectation. But like Councilman Danko said, is, you know, lawyers aren't going to come in below what they estimate.
If you got one that that does, let me know, Nick.
All right, well said. Councilwoman Hyder, comment?
Yes, I guess my only question would be, it seems that we're going to go through a period of negotiation here. Is there a timeline as far as how long the current firm that we're using will stay on board until we get a new board?
No, I don't have a timeline. I'm going to try to do this as soon as possible.
Okay.
Final comment? Councilwoman Pontieri, final comment before we, I think staff has been given direction. Any other comment?
I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
So I would open the item up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. And I do appreciate city council members, you know, eye on the numbers as we walk forward into the budget process. I think this is, you know, a great place to to start today. I know that we have a workshop coming up, but this is one component of of many, many. And I hope that you have sufficient direction to move forward and appreciate what you've done so far.
I do, and thank you, City Councilwoman Mayor.
Very good. So thank you for that. Okay. We now move on to the consent agenda. So I would ask city council members first, are there comments regarding any particular items on the consent agenda? Councilwoman Pontieri, since I can't see you, let me ask you first.
Mayor, would you mind circling back to me? I, I want to look and just make sure I don't have any comments. I don't think I do, but would you mind just coming back to me, friend?
Sure, sure. Councilman Clufus, were there any individual consent agenda items that you'd like to comment on at this time?
There were not.
And Councilwoman Hyder, none? I don't have any at this time, Vice Mayor?
I have none.
Nothing at this time. That was not a lot of time, Council, Councilwoman Pontieri. Do you want to take a minute? Take a minute?
I did want to point out one thing.
Yes.
For item number nine, just for the public's benefit, I spoke to staff about why the scope for this specific contract has changed, and it, you know, we are having to pay a little bit more money to change the scope. And that reason is that there were some changes made legislatively that that forced us to kind of change direction a little bit. And so, you know, I want to commend staff on their efforts lately to be very fiscally responsible and mindful. This specific ask for more monies is due to some changes beyond our control from a legal standpoint. So, and I spoke to staff about that yesterday, and I'm satisfied with their increased scope at this point and their ask for additional monies. And that was item number nine. Other than that, I had no other comments.
Good. I thank you for that. If there aren't any additional comments on the dais, I would open the consent agenda up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on any of the individual items on the consent agenda at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. Any final comments from city council members? No, then I'll go ahead. And all in favor, please signify by saying.
I will move to approve the consent agenda, as read.
Uh, Councilman Clufus has made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
And Vice Mayor Danko has seconded the motion. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Very good. We've now moved to final public participation. I would invite any members of the public to come forward to speak on any item that was not currently addressed in the prior agenda. Anyone? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public participation. And I will come back to city council for members not on the agenda, if I may. I do have one. And that one is, I noticed that on our agenda, we have a budget workshop scheduled for the day after the holiday. Good time to have it. I assume we won't have council attending that meeting, but it's not necessary. I do have a question for city manager, for staff. As we start moving closer to detailing the strategic action priorities and assigning the the values to them, I would like to ask for a presentation or information related to what we often refer to as alternative revenue streams, other places where monies to assist the budget could come from. And particularly, I'd like to address various financial instruments. So I would ask staff at the next meeting to at least identify those, and then if necessary, city council can decide which of those we'd like to have additional information on as part of the process. I don't want to get too far down the road in the budget without understanding that there may be other monies available and where they might come from.
Sure, Mayor. A couple of things. Your strategic action plan presentation with some implementation plan tactics will be presented by Dr. Saviac on June 18. I can work with you individually on some of those objectives and make sure the implementation plans are just perfect. And then, Mayor, we did hear you at your annual investment presentation about these financial instruments, and we have that currently scheduled for June 11. We're working with our financial advisor to put together that presentation.
Okay, I appreciate that. And so the detail will accompany that. Good, okay. Now, city council members, Councilman Clufus, any?
Nothing for today.
Final comments today?
Nothing for today.
Councilwoman Hyder?
I'd just like to offer condolences to the family of Pastor Daisy Henry, who passed away. She was a commissioner in Bonnell for fifteen years. I attended her funeral on Saturday, and I just want to offer condolences and not too bad.
We appreciate that. I had the good fortune to have a meeting or lunch, actually, with Mayor Catherine Robinson yesterday, who spoke about her being really a founding pillar of that entire community. So she will certainly be missed by so many, but a lot of what Bonnell is about to be able to do today rests on the hard work and selfless service that she offered over many years. So thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely.
The public's attention. Thank you. And Vice Mayor, anything else? Councilwoman Pontieri, I'll give you the the final on today's comments from city council members.
Just one, Mayor. I, for the June 11 presentation, I wonder if staff could also add to that one additional item, which is the legislator has passed the extra homestead exemption. Now, that is a referendum, so it will be on the ballot this fall. But I would like to see potential implications to our budget. If that passes, there's a high likelihood that it will be voted on to pass. So if we can maybe, and I understand it'll just be estimates, because we won't have final property values by that time, but I think we could get some pretty good guesstimates as to what impact that could have on our budget and our general fund when it does kick in, which I think would be fiscal year 26. So even if it's just a range, so that we all realize the, you know, the potential implications in the future for our budget.
Would you, would you like us to invite the property appraiser over to probably give us his best estimate?
If he can, I mean, I don't know that that's necessary. You know, I don't, I don't know what his schedule is like, and I would hate to say that if, you know, he can't be there, then we won't, you know, have that information. But definitely reaching out to him and seeing if he's compiled any of that and can provide that even for staff's benefit would be obviously preferable, yes.
Good point. I think you have, certainly have consensus on the dais here that we think that's incredibly important, and yes, very valuable in our forecast going forward. Vice Mayor?
Quick question. If if Jay could not make it over here, is this worth maybe delaying it to a time that might be convenient?
Well, if Jay can't, he has people in his office, but it's a numerical exercise, so they could send the report. I, I'm just, I'm offering him the opportunity if he would like to. I think the numbers are the numbers, and I think they have a good handle on it. And and Councilwoman Pontieri, you're right, it'll be a bit of a, of a guesstimate, but they're pretty good at this by now. They already have a good feeling of what the potential impact would be, and it's significant. Very good. Okay. Counselor, any final comments? Again, thank you for rejoining us, and we don't expect you to be going away anytime again soon.
That's not my intention. Happy to be back, Mayor.
Did you want to make a quick comment about the upcoming deployment of your peer?
Yes.
Not your peer, of your peer's unit.
So I believe there is a upcoming deployment next week, that the local guard here in Palm Coast, that there'd be a deployment for our service members and women that will be going off, so.
All right. So I'll make sure that that we're there to wish them well. I'm not sure exactly where they're going, but anytime a military service group gets deployed, we want to wish them all of our best and thank them for what they've done. So with that, I would ask city manager, any final comments for today's meeting?
Yes, Mayor, included in your packet was the emergency in Soul Source purchases for April of 2024, if anybody had any questions. And then finally, just wrapping up the week, we have Food Truck Tuesday tonight, Pool Safety Day is on Saturday, and we are Palm Coast proud of our National Public Works Week and also Pool Safety Month. So thank you.
Any questions regarding the the procurement piece? Very good. Councilwoman Pontieri, any final?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Very good. With that, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn. I have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilman Clufus, so we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.